Good evening, everyone. I now call to order the budget work session of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Monday, August ninth, two thousand twenty-one, at six thirty P. M. Ms. Jacobs, roll call, please.
Mayor LaHusus.
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Tierpenny.
Here.
Commissioner Donovan.
Here.
Commissioner Vaticiotes.
Here.
I'd like to remind to everyone that work sessions are primarily designed for information gathering and guidance. No formal commission decision, approving or disapproving, denied or maybe be made. Only staff members should be included into the work session discussion unless prior arrangements have been made through the city manager, city clerk, or city attorney. The last two budget work sessions, we had, we had a time limit. Do you want to set a timeline for tonight?
We'll just set it for eight thirty.
Second.
I'm sorry, what time?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty. And roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tierpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes. The first item on agenda, CIP budget follow-ups. Mr. LaCouris, your follow-ups, please.
Yes. You have the sheet in front of you. We left it on the desk. I know some of you might expect something else. What we did with the CIP list was, first of all, you have a capital projects funding alternative sheet here. Again, we've been working, Ron Herring and myself have been working on several aspects of it. You have two categories that you see on here. The first one, and Ron will explain it to you a little more, we get it, we're trying to anticipate the coronavirus funding that's coming in, and this is specifically the funding for reduction in our funds, which doesn't have any restrictions on it. So whereas you have the coronavirus money that's coming down, and it's got a lot of restrictions, the reimbursement to us for losses, we're able to use pretty much the way we see fit. And the thought is, we have one, we have a big project that needs to be done, and that's the roof chiller, the public safety building. Again, we can talk some more about that project and what it needs to be. And we added one of the items in there, the resurfing and the Court Street parking lot, and library parking lot, and culture parking lot. We, we introduced those, those two, which came to a total of nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Ron's anticipating we're going to have between one point two and one point five million. So these are some major projects that's either going to kind of have to come out of the penny fund or our CIP budget that, that we could fund by this. And again, we'll, we'll go back to it and have some questions, but we kind of separated those out because, as you know, that would take a huge chunk of, of our other funds. So we kind of separated that out. Ron thinks we can use that money for it, and that's why you see it on top. When we look at the penny fund and the capital projects that you suggested, we took the ones that had been most mentioned to us by, by commissioners and commissioners. These are all subject for discussion tonight. We want to see where we are, because if, if you did all of these projects, you'd almost have the penny fund money that we know of right now. Again, it may be, it may be more, and we may have some later, but we wanted to go through these major ones and see where you were with them, which ones were definite that you wanted to fund, and that leaves us more of an idea with what money we have left to do some of those list of projects that are, that were lesser dollar amount in nature, and, and decide where those goes. Those, those include the design engineering and building the sidewalk sports complex to Mellon. Originally, we had planned for this budget to maybe just, just budget the seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars for the design, and then do the project the year after. That's still able to do now, but there's been concern from several of his board about that project and getting that project done. So we're offering up, if that's the case, and that's what you wanted to do, that's where you got the five hundred thousand. Obviously, we're making a stab at how much it's going to cost without the engineering. We'll know from the design and stuff, but we're anticipating, and, you know, Bob can tell you when we get to that item a little more, why we're anticipating a higher cost than can be expected by that. On the Sizzler Field improvements that we talked about and had agreement, I, I broke that down because the Sizzler Field fencing was the one Commissioner Donovan brought up. There's pretty much consensus about, but Tom's going to, Tom Function will tell you tonight that really it needs to go in conjunction with work on the field. The corn replaced the infield, strip inside the outfield replaced the irrigation, drain improvement, a complete doing of that field. So we think that's maybe important to add to it, to get the whole project done. And then on, on the thirty thousand for the J.C. field, that can either be, there was two things in, in the budget. There was the fence that Commissioner Donovan mentioned. There was also, what I got a little mixed up, was a thirty thousand in the budget for redoing, re-sodding, and redoing the outfield. So that thirty thousand could go to either of those, and that's where we came up with that hundred and twenty thousand. We added some additional shade sales, Sunset Beach, and, which will be, you know, which will be a higher cost. We're thinking about fifty-five to sixty, and, and the leftover money, maybe do additional ones at one of the ball fields. The Roosevelt Seawall design and build, again, that's, that's an estimated two hundred thousand dollars that, that Bob Robertson could talk about. We had talked about doing something with that land on Gulf Road, which is going to be a future fire department. If we're going to do that, we really need to do the ground stabilization. If you remember, when we bought the property, there's, there are some issues under the ground. Again, we can talk about that and what needs to be done, but before we do anything, a dog park was a great idea for that, some kind of other thing. Probably what we should do for whatever we're going to do in the future is do that ground stabilization, and then obviously, we can see with the budget of, of doing what your plans are for that property. And then one that a lot of you have mentioned, the actual construction of, of Orange Street, and the estimate of, of five hundred thousand there. So that's a total, that's a total of close to the one point five million. Open for discussion, see where we are with that, and then, again, we can, we can talk about, or we've got plenty of time. The budget goes on, you know, every month, so if we wanted to add things in between that and stuff, but I thought we'd open these up for discussion, and all the staff is prepared to talk about any of these issues you talk about, and we see how we want to schedule the funding, if it's this year, next year, or if we want to go on and look at something else that we had had on the list. So I'll open up with, you know, Ron's available, or any staff, to talk about any of these, and, and come up and, and talk about these on the list.
Mr. LaCouris, I'm going to start with the penny fund. The sidewalks from, it says sidewalks to Sports Complex to Mellon, is that all the way from Tarpon Avenue?
We've already got the project from, from there to the cemetery. This is, this is the, this is the phase two, as we call it, from the Sports Complex to Mellon.
Okay. Well, this is a project that we must do. A lot of kids walk in, and it's unsafe, and I totally support that.
Bob to talk about the price a little bit, or Bob and Tom?
Sure. It sounds like a lot of money, though, but. That it? Five hundred? Could be more.
You take the high road.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dynamic duo.
Is that the two brothers?
A pair to be a full house, huh?
Two on five, Tom, we can take them.
See how good we are, two at the same time, huh?
Questions, sir?
Yeah, question?
Well, can you tell us?
Explain during the pri, I asked, explain the, the pricing, and why the pricing seems a little bit higher than normal.
Yeah, in, in most cases, on a, on a normal type of sidewalk, depending, of course, on, on the site you're working on, it wouldn't be all that expensive, about thirty-five, forty bucks lineal foot. In this case here, when you're running from Mellon Street heading south towards Tar, Tarpon Ave., there's a number of issues we have. One is elevation changes. From Mellon, as you go, of course, court, towards the, a little bit up, there's a low spot for some drainage, so we have some drainage issues there. As you get a little bit further up the road, you actually have three-on-one slopes on both sides of the roadway that come down. You also have a driveway, you also have the entrance to the, the Rose Cemetery. As you get further down, then again, as we get down a lower section, you have another issue with drainage where the, the swamp area.
Right.
Feeds over to the, to the golf, over to the, the existing cemetery.
Right.
So there's a lot of, there's a lot of work there. You're probably going to need some sort of, what they call, walls on both sides of the sidewalks, and all to hold up the banks back.
Either gravity walls or possibly boardwalks.
Gravity walls, exactly. You have ADA considerations, so when you start getting to where these driveways are, you're going to have to incorporate some type of ADA into there with the steep slopes, so there's going to be quite a bit of excavation work there to do.
So you're going to build walls, you're going to be a bridge or anything, right?
Not on this, not on this one, no, not, no, sir.
Okay.
The only bridge we have is, on the original one, which, like Mark mentioned, we have for this upcoming year, that was already funded, going from the, the new cemetery into the Sports Complex.
Okay. Well, it is expensive, but we have to do it.
Mayor.
You know? Go ahead.
Tom and Bob, have you guys looked at just redoing the whole road? So bringing in more dirt instead of retrofitting the sidewalk, bringing in more dirt? I mean, what the new road costs, I mean, six hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And then that way, you don't have to have sidewalks in both, or, the walls built, and you have a, a level space going in from the sidewalk now to the road, and then you've got a new road also. I mean, for that price tag, we should be able to build a pretty nice road, I think. Has that been evaluated or looked at at all?
The putting in, you know, you're talking about adding footage to the roadway, raising the roadway up?
Yeah.
That would cost you probably a lot more than sidewalks would. You'd have to take up the old roadway, mill it, compact it.
Well, it needs to be done sooner than later already, right? I mean, one, I'm not sure when it's, when it's on the list, but the road's in pretty tough shape already, so I wasn't sure if that was evaluated. That's my question. Has it been evaluated?
No, at this stage, it wasn't. And I think, you know, with that number, the five hundred thousand, that includes the design work that, that we haven't scoped out or any of that part yet. This is all very preliminary. One thing we could do is an alternatives analysis at the very beginning of this, where we look at things like that, so the board can make a decision if you wanted to look at just doing a sidewalk versus a complete, you know, re, rebuild of the roadway that would include sidewalks and things.
A sidewalk, right.
Right. So I mean, that's something that we could, we could include in the early stages of this project, since, like I said, we're, this is a very, very preliminary right now.
And the road could be pushed to the west a little bit further as well, to give you more space for the sidewalk on the east side, potentially.
Unknown, yeah. Potentially, but unknown.
If there's right away, and so. It's something that I'll talk about when it's, when it's my turn, so, thank you.
Commissioner Jeffery, comments?
Yeah, just, just real quick, since you brought it up, Mayor. You guys know I'm a solutions guy, so.
Yes.
My question is, have you looked at the west side? I know that it would be most desirable to have the sidewalk on the east side where the ballpark is, but I mean, on the east, on the west side, you don't have any elevation change, you know, assuming we have enough right-of-way, and we have jurisdiction of Jasmine, then you could have, you know, a pretty substantial crosswalk to just cross Jasmine, which would get you to the Sports Complex. We own all the, all the right-of-way, you know, there, there wouldn't be the elevation change, et cetera. Has anybody looked at the west side?
That would, we'd do the original analysis, decide that if just you need one side or both sides.
And, and what did you determine?
I think he's saying the west side, instead of.
Just do the west side.
Just do the west side.
Yeah.
It's a possibility, yes.
I mean, you don't have the same physical challenges that you do on the east side.
Not necessarily. You do have some type of challenges, probably about a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet from Mellon Street heading south, there is some, again, as you have a three-on-one slope from the existing cemetery. There's also storm.
And multiple crosses and.
Multiple crosses.
And things to consider, but that could be something we consider in the alternatives analysis in the early stages, sure.
I think it makes sense. I mean, I think we all agree that, you know, we need some form of walking path to down Jasmine in between the areas that we're talking about, but I mean, if it's a substantial saving and we have jurisdiction of Jasmine, so it's not as if we have to ask anybody for, you know, to build a crosswalk that we would want, and you can, you know, just throw numbers out there, save half or two hundred and fifty, and put that towards sidewalks and other aspects of the community, you know, I think that that's something that I would look favorably on, because, you know, probably the biggest expense is the elevation change, and then also building the boardwalk in the low-lying areas.
Yeah.
You know, that definitely gets expensive, and it ends up being a maintenance nightmare long-term. So if, you know, if we could, you know, have a pretty easy fix by doing the west side, seems like that would be.
We would do that with the analysis. Let's do now, look at both of them, and come back to you and say.
My other question is, the seventy-five to a hundred to design it, is that something that we would contract out to Cardinal?
One of our engineer record contracts, certainly, yeah.
So just, I'm going to use this as a point, you know, for seventy-five or a hundred thousand dollars to design a sidewalk, if we had someone in-house that could do that, that's just a very blatant example of why I think it would be beneficial to have an in-house engineer. Thank you.
I would like to bring up one point, if you don't mind. We do have Old Cemetery there, and one of my recommendations would be to look at what's in the ground there, have a penetr, ground penetrating radar to make sure that we're not encompassing any type of graveyards outside that fence, so that cost would also be in that, that design, yeah.
That's some smart money spent.
Mm-hmm, yeah, sir.
Yeah.
Any comments on that?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I don't have any questions as it pertains to the sidewalk construction. I was just wondering, I guess, for the structure of the meeting, are we going to go through the capital project shopping list here, and just ask any questions we may have about it, X out what we don't want? Are we going to?
Well, this is what the, the city manager is proposing to us, if you have any questions on any of them, since we already talking now about the sidewalks to, sidewalk to the Sports Complex, if you, anything that you want to contribute to that.
So is this, this is not questions on everything, it's just questions for the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Okay, then, no, I don't have any questions.
You're okay with that? Commissioner Vaticiotes, any comments on that particular item, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Is the issue with the five hundred thousand that we would, maybe this is a Ron Herring question, is this something that we earmark that that's off the table, if we put that in the budget as five hundred thousand dollars at this point? Or is this something that could be reprogrammed if we needed to?
Well, if it comes up to, yes, it could be reprogrammed next year, if you've already got it within the budget.
Or even during the year or something like that.
Right, you can go ahead and do a budget resolution and say, okay, we want to move this to another project.
Okay. Mr. Function, if we do it on the west side, are we really talking about from Mellon Street or where the trail crosses Jasmine?
Well, we'd be, well, the trail doesn't cross, the trail crosses Jasmine much further down.
That's right.
We would want to put some crosswalk at, at Mellon Street where it crosses Jasmine to tie into a western sidewalk, yes.
Okay, but if we're talking about the North Lake residents, the children that live there and things like that, they would wind up crossing right there at Mellon Street to get to the, use that sidewalk to get to the Sports Complex, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I, I think that we, and I spoke to the city manager about this a little bit today. I don't have a problem exploring either option, one way or the other. I, I think if we're going to look at the west side and the east side, maybe we should just get some kind of a conceptual idea, plan which way would be the most beneficial before we start designing. I think the seventy-five hundred is, is basically an all-out design on the east side, is that correct?
That's right.
Maybe the first step would be, I, I don't have a problem putting the five hundred thousand dollars aside if, if that's, if we could reprogram that for whatever reason, if we do do it on the west side, and it costs a lot less than that, but maybe some kind of an exploratory study to determine what, which side would be the best as far as cost, and also to actually serve the purpose of safely getting children and pedestrians from the north end by Mellon Street to the Sports Complex. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any comments on the Sizzler Field improvements? Commissioner Donovan, that was your idea.
Yeah, I guess if, if I guess I, I could have the city manager, or Ron, or Tom, maybe expand a little bit. So what I was discussing last meeting, you see one of them on there plain as day, is the Sizzler Field fencing for fifty thousand dollars. You see that in the budget background as well. The other thing you see in the budget background that I had attached was thirty thousand dollars, possibly for the J.C. Field fencing. And so I guess if I can understand from staff's point of view, is it just, you're saying it just makes more sense when you're ripping all the fencing out of the ground to go ahead and redo the infield and the outfield?
As far as Sizzler Field itself goes, yes. We need to.
The J.C., let me, let me clarify on there and stuff, because that's kind of my confusion, with you being gone, I kind of confused them. Tom had a thirty thousand item on there for the outfield. That J.C. Field and that fence is, is not connected with what he's going to tell you about Sizzler Field, so that thirty thousand can just be for the fencing, and the outfield work can, can wait. In fact, that, so, so I had took the, the soil and thing out of his budget that he had talked about doing the field also, but that's something that can also be done in, in the next year. That has, so, so really, your original thirty thousand for the fencing could be, could be for the J.C. Field. Is the Sizzler Field where the fencing and the field work? And, and why don't you go ahead and explain why you're there, why, why the importance of doing the work on the field when you do the fencing there?
Yeah, as far as Sizzler Field goes, you notice the elevation changes from home plate to the pitcher's mound, all the way up to center field, it actually drains back off towards the batting cages, towards the new concession stand. That needs to be brought down, re-cored, and then brought up, and then put a nice little slope on the fields over here, how the ball field should be built over here. So that's why we can't put a fence up and not do the field. I need to do the field first, and then put the fence in when we're finished coring and replacing the, the soils.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, the Sizzler Field fencing, to me, is, is, I mean, a huge priority, obviously. If it's going to take the Sizzler Field work as well, then, you know, the more the merrier, it's just going to be better for the kids to play on. So I guess, so that'd be ninety grand, correct, for the Sizzler Field fencing and the Sizzler Field work?
Yes.
Should be ninety grand, okay. Yeah, I mean, and, and again, you can see it in the letter from the VP of, of Tarpon Springs Little League Baseball and Softball, that the J.C. Field fencing is also, is also in, in need of some love, but I understand if, given the new, you know, forty grand additional from the Sizzler fencing, if, if, you know, the board has a little bit of heartburn over it. But I, I think Sizzler Field should be the priority. Again, I, I think if we're going to spend thirty thousand on J.C. Field, I would do the fencing rather than the, the re-sodding, or else we're just going to end up back here in a, in a couple of years, asking for the fencing to be red, redone as well. But absolutely support all the Sizzler Field work going on, so thank you, guys.
Any comments on that?
I do support the, let me just understand real quick, so the city spent ninety thousand dollars to redo both the other fields a couple of years ago, and now this field is.
I don't remember the exact numbers.
I think it was around ninety thousand. All new fencing, new dugouts.
I think it was more than that, was, do you remember, Ron?
It must.
The hundred and twenty, or is it?
Yeah, it was definitely more than that.
I think you're getting up close, hundred and forty, hundred and fifty thousand, if I remember right.
I just want to make sure that my number is, add two plus two, it's four, right? But I just want to make sure that the one field doesn't cost ninety, and it costs ninety to do the other two, so, okay. I just want to clarify that. So I'm, I've had a lot of complaints about the fields flooding at Sizzler Field, so I understand what you're saying. Tom, I think it makes sense completely, the fence, it might be original from nineteen twenty, I don't know, Mark. It's in bad shape. So the part that I, I do have questions about is the J.C. Field. Myself, I would rather see Riverside Field be refenced and J.C. Field. J.C. Field is fifteen years old, maybe. I don't know how old it actually is, the fencing, but the fencing is literally falling apart at the Riverside Field in some places. So to me, I would rather see that thirty thousand dollars be sent on the Riverside Soccer Field before we do the J.C. Field, and then we could allocate, like I've talked to you, city manager, to have some type of capital improvement with the fields to say, in two years, the J.C. Field is, is planned to do that, and then it hits the budget at that point.
Yes.
To move forward. But I think that as a board, we should really look at Riverside Field fencing, because that was discussed at the last meeting, but that's not on this list, right? So right now, Riverside Field for the tennis courts or the soccer field isn't on the list for replacement.
This plumber, it is on our list of, of possible monies, and again, we've got other places we're hoping for, but that would be a consideration of that, that fence, that money replacing for that field.
Okay, no, I mean, I, I'm, yes, so I'm in support of the first two with Sizzler Field. I think J.C. should go on a, a waitlist for maybe two years from now, and, but we should really focus on Riverside Field as well with that additional dollars.
Well, I support both of them, but the question I, I like to ask is, what's the possibility if we do the Riverside as well, Mr. LaCouris? Was it thirty thousand, thirty thousand dollars for the fencing there?
Do you remember that price? It was a little more than that price for the Riverside Field?
Yeah, it was like sixty.
Yeah, I think it was sixty. It's a higher, it's a taller fence, though.
Yeah.
Probably more lineal feet.
Do we have a way that we can do that?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
There's a capability to doing that, yes.
Yeah. I see a lot of kids playing there constantly, so I think it's good for the kids to be safe. Commissioner Tierpenny?
Thank you. So I was also going to try and get a little clarity on the, the field rehabilitations. I know that we did, you know, a pretty good makeover on probably half of the fields, and I was curious if we did J.C. Field not long ago, but evidently we didn't, otherwise you wouldn't be recommending the soil replacement and whatnot, right?
Yeah, we probably get another year or so of J.C. Field, but the outfield could use some, some, some attention, yes. use some, some attention, yes, sir.
So, so my thinking would be similar to the vice mayor's in terms of the priority. I think J.C. Field can wait, and then I would like to see the Riverside Field redone as well, the fencing there. And I was going to ask what the, if we had any numbers associated with that, you're saying it's 60?
It's about 60,000, yeah.
Yeah, so, so the Sizzler Field rework with the infield and then the fencing, I definitely support. And then, the next item as far as fencing and fields, my priority would be the Riverside Field.
If we have $30,000 that we can, you know, actually use for the J.C. Fields, we're not doing that?
I mean, if there's extra money.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. I mean, if there's extra money, I don't have any issue with it.
Okay.
But if there's not, and we're looking at, you know.
Balancing, yeah.
Yeah, balancing.
Mr. Quiz, would you look at that and see if you have $30,000 available so you can do the J.C. Field at the same time?
It's really 60.
I thought it says 30.
If you're saying do the Riverside Field and the Sizzler Field.
Right.
It's 60.
Uh-huh. No, actually, it's 50.
So, you're talking about adding 30 for that? You're talking about adding 30,000 to the, to the, 60 for the Riverside Field and then seeing if there's another 30,000 available when we go? And again, they'll tell us we go through some of these other items, because there is, there is still some money available. I'm sure after we go through these items, there's going to be some money available.
The reason I'm saying that is because we've got the coronavirus funding that is coming in. You see what I mean? I think it's important to do that.
But I've got your priority of, the priorities.
Yeah.
Sizzler, Riverside, and then J.C.
And J.C.
Yeah, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Tiqueros?
Yeah, thank you. The 50,000, is that a hard number? Is that a good estimate?
We got it from the, from a fence company.
Does that include the batting cage as well?
I'd have to go back and look it up. I believe it does. It does include the new dugouts, though, because the dugouts, they want to keep the original ones.
It doesn't include them?
Well, the old dugouts at Sizzler Field, or the concrete ones, they told me they like to keep those. There's a small fence in front, so it takes them out, yeah.
But we've got, I was out there Saturday, and we've got the batting cages.
Yeah.
Right, actually built onto the side of the Sizzler Field.
Yes.
And I would hope that we would do those at the same time.
They're fairly new. They're only, those batting cages may be eight, 10 years old. They're not very old.
Are we going to go with black?
Yeah, black vinyl, that's what I'm asking for, yes.
So, maybe we could get those painted or something?
I will talk to the fence people and get as much as I can get out of it.
Okay. So, I think just to kind of make it look finished off, we're going to be spending this much money on that. The other thing, Mayor, I wanted to say, at some point on a lot of this stuff that we've got, we give the Budget Advisory Committee and we ask them for their help, and at some point, I did speak to the city manager about this too, some of these other items that may not be so obvious of what we do, we should have some Recreation Advisory Board input on some of these as well from a prioritization. They may have some other issues that are priority as well that we should look at during budget time. I don't know that we've done that, and, not this time, of course, but maybe next time. I mean, I'd like to get some input from, other than ourselves, our five, you know, the five of us sitting up here.
Yeah.
Tom, you sit on that board. Have any of these been discussed during that time?
Yes, actually, the fencing's been come up quite a bit.
What's that?
The fencing. I sit on that board, I run that parking lot export over here, and the fencing is one of the big.
For J.C. Field, or?
For multiple, well, not so much J.C. Field, more for Sizzler Field.
I mean, for the groundwork I'm talking about, the Riverside as well as J.C. Field.
Yeah, that has come up. We have tennis players that are on the board.
Well, I agree with the mayor. I mean, if, I don't want to have there some perception that we're going to do one and now we're kind of swapping it off and maybe doing something off, maybe city manager Lacorius, you know, in the old days, Bob Bublitz used to have magic beans where he could find money and stuff like that. And I'm sure Ron Herring has a few of those left over. But at least, maybe we should just take a look at that. Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Tiqueros, we've got something that we never had before. This is the coronavirus funding. We can.
No, I know. I think that's, that's an excellent thing. And by the way, I, the one item that is on here with regard to the resurfacing, restriping Court Street Parking Lot, Library Parking Lot, Cultural Parking Lot, I think that's an excellent example. If we didn't have coronavirus, our crews would have been out there doing it, but they weren't out there doing it. So, let's contract it out and get it done. That is a good, very good rationale for why we're going to contract that out. So, I understand, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. We have several items there that, if anybody wants to discuss that, the additional shade sales for, and also the Sunset Beach Roosevelt, Roosevelt Seawall Design and Build, ground stabilization for the Golf Road, this is where the fire station was supposed to be built, and the Orange Street Reconstruction. Any of those projects that you want to talk about? Anyone? Vice Mayor?
I just want to understand the shade, man, the shade sales and the ball field, Sunset Beach. Tom, is that, Mayor, do you want me to go down all these while you have me, or do you want to go, you just want to do one at a time again like we've been doing?
Actually, you know, to, to save time since we're going to be adjourned at 8:30, I thought, let's just get the ones that you want to talk about instead of going one at a time.
Okay. So, Tom, help me understand what ball fields we're talking about here and parks we're talking about for the shade sales.
Well, what we, I'll go ahead and answer that, because I was looking at different things to do. Depending on the price of the Sunset Beach one, the Sunset Beach for the playground, that's, that's more than the rest, that's probably 50 or 60. I know the number one priority is the softball, the one where the tree came down in the softball field. So, that would kind of, Sunset Beach would be one, that would, the one on the softball field where the tree came down to the sun would be two. And then, whatever money was, it would take us to how many sales we could get on prioritizing. But those, those are the two main ones. The sunset, the playground, and then the one field that the tree came down, that the softball people are talking about that wasn't shaded.
So, is it like the whole Sunset Beach play area would be a giant shade, like at Wall Springs, something like that you're talking about?
Yeah.
Or just over, okay. So, it'd be like the whole area? Wouldn't just be a small shade, like over the seating area, like at the ballpark?
Because we looked at the slide, we looked at, I, tell them about what you talked to the sale. I think it was you talking to the sale guy.
Yeah, I was telling the salespeople, you know, wherever you're putting these shade sales out, depending on that usage, of course, Sunset Beach is used all day long, so you need something that covers it, no matter which direction, wherever the sun happens to be. Ball field's a little bit different. If you're, most of the time, your games are in the evenings or late afternoons, then the shades are a little bit different. But to build a shade over top of the Sunset Beach, you got to cover probably, it's probably a 600, 700 square foot area. It's quite large.
Okay. Got it. I mean, if you're going to do it, you want to do the whole area instead of just a small portion of it. So, I get that part. Roosevelt makes sense, the seawall design makes sense. Mark, the one thing I would say, like with the ground stabilization on Golf Road, I mean, I know it needs to be done, but Bob, if you could help me understand, I think you're the one that was running with this one, or Mark, you could let me know who I need to talk to, can something be done from like a passive park or something along those lines until, if construction moves forward, to grow it at that point? Or is the property safe to do something on the property now without doing anything? Or is it a concern and a hazard today?
I wouldn't recommend doing anything on that site until we're able to stabilize it, for sure. Just that, for comfort's sake, because we know that area has issues like that, so.
Well, I mean, we live in Florida and all, like, the whole area does.
Some areas are worse than others, and we've done testing in this area. So, I would be, my concern would be.
Well, I think when we talked, when we talked about it in staff, we felt that, for instance, if it's a dog park or something passive like that, the cost would probably be a lot of, there would not be a lot of budgetary cost in-house to just do that. Where the budget money would come in is finally getting that ground stabilized so anything happens. So, while the thought was to put the money in here for doing it, we think it's very easy, with very little equipment and cost, for instance, to do a passive type park or a dog park or something. So, we figured those costs we could do in this upcoming year. But, you know, we just, we just felt that, that this is going to have to be done one or another before we put people on it and do it, just in the case of something opening up, that we might want to do that first if we're putting people on there and stuff. But again, it's not just doing that and then leaving it. I think we can do that and then put whatever the ideas of the passive park, I think we can do that within this budget here with monies that we've got to have something there at the end, not just it in the ground and still an open field. But we'll be able to put what this board, what this board wants to put there, as long as it's not, you know, elaborate playground system or something. The passive type aspects or dog park with materials, that's going to be really inexpensive to do and make look nice and everything. So, that was our thought for something to be on there, not just that underneath the ground, but to put what you want on there.
Got it. So, based on the reports, it's going to be best to grow it before anything's done on that from a safety standpoint?
I would think so, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for clarifying that for me. And then, the Orange Street reconstruction is a must. It's a big price tag, but again, it's sidewalk versus a full reconstruction of a whole road, so, thank you.
Just let me, let me do one note on that and stuff. Orange Street's going to cost a lot more, but some of it's utility and what, there's other, it's going to be more than 500,000 to do that. But as far as the money that we're talking about dedicating in this budget from these funds.
Oh, yeah.
That's what we're talking about. What other, like, water, a couple of other funds that it's going to come from for that road and for Orange?
Yeah, it could be a little bit of stormwater related to drainage, if we put in a little, we do some modifications that way. Utilities, like you said, landscaping, whatever else we choose to add to the project. The scope of that work is still undefined, so, we don't know everything that's going to be in it.
Commissioner Teppe?
Thanks, Mayor.
Ron, as far as the new chiller and roof at the Public Safety Building, is there, is there another avenue for funding? Or are we trying to just eat up this COVID money?
What we're trying to do with that is keep it from taking into our penny fund and our other fund where we take it from. It's an opportunity to use that money and not, because otherwise, it would be a penny fund or a project, and you see the scope of that money. You know, pretty much your list that you have, even this list, and obviously, you've got a lot more items that you mentioned on CIP that I want to try to find the money to fund. But you see, if that project's down below, then you wipe out a lot of your projects. So, explain to them why you thought this was a good coverage under that COVID money. There are some things that aren't a good match for that COVID money because of losses, but explain your rationale, Ron, why I liked the parking lot, why this was a good use of, and again, this is the part of the money that makes up for the losses that the city has and doesn't have the strict, or, or we're not sure the conditions of what we use the money for, the rest of the money, which has conditions of what it can be used for. So, kind of explain that to them, Ron, how we came to that and found a place where we wouldn't have to pull from our other CIP money to do this that's going to have to be done.
Yes, as the city manager is saying, if we, if there wasn't for the American Rescue Plan money, we'd be looking at the penny fund for that. But under the American Rescue Plan Act, there's a revenue reduction money. They can make, they have a calculation. I've gone through the calculation, and based on the revenue reduction, it looks like we're between 1.2 and 1.5 million. Lots of revenue reduction, we just can't use it for anything. So, there are certain guidelines on what we can use it for, for that revenue reduction portion of the money. And one of it is, is police and fire infrastructure, which includes maintenance, fixed assets on, on the police and fire buildings.
Understood. Yeah, I, I forget who, I mean, this is, this is nothing new. We've been talking about this for a couple of years. I forget who walked us all through the roof and the chiller room a few years ago. I was just curious if there was any monies aside from this, and obviously not penny money, that we could utilize, you know, through the public, I mean, given that it's at the Public Safety Building.
Right, I'm sure, you know, general fund, but I'm sure that's, you know.
Gotcha, okay, no problem. That's good enough.
Are you talking about impact fees or something like that?
No, I was just, I didn't know if, you know, public safety money sometimes can be spent a certain way, and I didn't know if there was, you know, some, some funding through, through that account. And then, my question on the resurface and restripe, Tom, when you say resurface, that's like, you're going to grind it down, resurface, or you're just going to blacktop it, like with a sealant?
On the parking lots?
Yeah.
I'm actually going to do a micro surface. It's a little bit of a thin pavement over here, if I find great over here. It lasts much longer.
So, we're adding, we're adding blacktop then?
Just, almost, just a sheet of paper, almost, like, yes.
Okay, so it's not just to, you're not just sealing it?
No, no, not just.
So, any, any cracks or anything like that will be taken out?
Yeah, they'll come in, they'll fill the cracks, seal the cracks off, and then put the micro surface on top of it.
And it'll all be flat surface?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks. My thoughts in terms of the Golf Road stabilization, I guess my, my question would be, does the stabilization, the, the level of stabilization, does that depend on the level of use? In other words, you're going to build a 3,000 square foot building there, you're going to build a 10,000 square foot building there, does the level of stabilization dictate, or I'm sorry, does the use dictate the level of stabilization?
No, it doesn't, no.
Gotcha, okay. So, my thinking there would just be, you know, until we had an actual idea of what our intentions are to build there, if there was a difference, you know, in the stabilization, then I would wait until we had an idea of what our use would be there. Again, I understand that it's, you know, we're trying to spend this money in a certain way. So, if, so if it's $80,000 regardless of whether you do X or Z, then it doesn't really matter, right?
Correct.
Okay, so then I'm okay with spending the money, because then it just frees us up to, to do whatever we want with it, one way or the other. It would be different for me if it was, you know, the, the level of stabilization was different, but it's not. So, I'm good with it. I don't have anything else, Mayor.
I don't, I don't have a problem with, with what's on the list as far as a budget perspective goes. I just, I guess we'll just, we'll just kind of see what happens with those COVID funds. And I know it'll come back to us at a later date, once everything's solidified. But I just, I would have some heartburn on getting COVID relief funds from COVID and then spending, you know, over 80% of on, on a roof and chiller. So, I mean, I'm happy, again, as, as far as placeholders go, to, to say, all right, let's, let's move forward with this. But just know when those funds come in, they might have some additional stipulations we don't know about. I mean, we'll, we'll see what happens with it. But other, other than the COVID stuff, I think we did a good job, and that's, that's it for me.
City Manager Lacorius, did you mention the shelter at Sunset Beach in your preliminary comments before we got into this discussion?
Not in preliminary, but, but I think we have the money left over for this, but to do that. That's why it isn't in the budget for coming, next year. I plan to hopefully do that within the monies we have in this budget right now before it ends to do that.
In the current year budget?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'm, I'm glad on the, on the sale, shade sale for Sunset Beach, that's a wonderful thing. It's, I was out there the other day again, and they're sitting right out there in the sunshine. The building assessment, just, we're talking about that, that needs to be updated. I talked to the city manager about that, because I wasn't sure. I was looking at these lists, and I said, oh, my gosh, we've got all these things to do. And, and city manager Lacorius reminded me that some of these things we've already done. And I think Ron did as well. I spoke to Ron about that, so, that would be helpful. And also, the, the Orange Street reconstruction, the 500,000, is that compared to what we did with Court Street, or is that, is that where you're getting that number from?
Right, that's where we're drawing that from. Just kind of just the concept.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there's no, I thought of working East Court Street in with that. I'm sorry, we've got Orange Street and East Court Street. I mean, I, do we have any plans for doing East Court Street at all?
I don't know.
We're just going to get Orange Street out of the way first, and then, is that the idea?
Yeah, Orange Street was the, Lemon Street, which what we, you know, we talked about Lemon Street, Mr. Kadiakas, and that's coming up, that was already budgeted. The one after Lemon Street was Orange Street, which we want to budget in this upcoming budget. And then, and then, then, then the next, you know, I know East Court Street is one of the top ones, which would be the next place where we go, I believe.
Okay. I had a question on the stabilization, but Bob Robertson clarified that. And the game plan is to do something minor with that as far as cost to give it some use for the public?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Couple of questions. I'm sorry, you want to say something?
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure.
Can I get back to you for a minute?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Herring, would you please explain to us how the American Rescue Fund works and, because it's been delayed a couple of times?
Yeah, well, we still don't have our portion of that money yet. It's, it's still with the state right now. And you talked about the different components of the American Rescue Plan and what it can be used for?
Yeah, and if you explain the difference between the American Rescue Fund and the coronavirus, how can we use it?
You talk about the You talk about the COVID cares money?
Well, the COVID care money.
Well, the COVID cares, we didn't receive, but in the last year, we received money through Pinellas County, who got money from the first amount of money that went out about a year ago. And we didn't get it ourselves, but the county did. And then we submitted reimbursement to the county, and we got $524,000 back, which was COVID cares money. Now you've got the American Rescue Plan money, which is, say, the 10.7 million out there that we're supposed to get in two installments. One, I keep, I talked to the other finance directors, we're hoping by the end of the month, we get the first half of it, but you get the money, then there's the eligible uses. And I mentioned the revenue reduction portion of it, and then there's the infrastructure for water, sewer, and stormwater, infrastructure, and cybersecurity. And then the other parts is for health services. I'm not sure if there's that much of, that we can use that for, for us, and there might be some, but then the other part is premium pay for workers. So those are like the four components of the American Rescue Plan, the health services, premium pay, infrastructure, and then the revenue reduction portion.
So if we're gonna get over $2 million, we should be able to come up with more projects? Is that, what do you think?
Yes, and I know staff has already been coming up with some projects, water and sewer projects, some septic to sewer ones. I know Suzanne, she's got a list of cybersecurity projects, and there might be stormwater, Tom might have some on it from his stormwater action plan that we could earmark for it.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Robinson, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions. Start with the ground stabilization on the Gulf Road. In order for us to use it for anything, including a park, or we must cure that with some kind of a grout, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is it something that we must monitor every so often, because voids do create themselves, right?
It's not typically needed. It's something we could do periodically, but it's not typically needed. The stabilization system is pretty thorough.
Okay. It's not something that, you know, you do one time and this is it. I mean, you don't have to worry about it again to go monitor and see if any other voids have been created?
You don't typically need to, no. You don't typically need to. It can be done, but you don't typically need to.
Okay.
Because you're basically filling those voids with grout until the back pressure reaches the level that they're full, and there's a grid that these are installed in, so it pretty much stabilizes it for good.
Okay. And if we don't do that, there'll be a safety concern to use it in for anything, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I'm supporting it. The Orange Street, which is a street that I spent many of my years there, is that's going to be a break street as well?
That's the intention, yes.
Okay, and you're going to replace all the piping underground?
As needed, yes.
Okay. Is that including the lights on the side of the roads?
If they need to be, sure. Maybe they would just be reused, depending on their condition. They have to include an assessment of those.
Thank you.
Part of the project.
It needs to be done. Thank you. That's all I have. Vice Mayor, you had a comment to make?
Yeah, I just wanted clarification. You started asking the question, Mayor, to Ron. So the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, that's revenue reduction of 1.2 to 1.5 million, is that different from the American Rescue Plan? So you have the chillers, and then the resurfacing, and then there's another 300 to 600,000 dollars?
Well, the coronavirus, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you there, but...
You're good.
American Rescue Plan's got different, I say buckets of money out there, you know, counties, different other groups of money. The state, the city, for the local governments, that's titled the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, portion of the American Rescue Plan money. So they're one and the same, it's just, that's the city's bucket of the American Rescue Plan money.
Is the one point, let's just say this is 1.5 for now, is that in addition to the 10.7, or is that included in the 10.7?
No, that's, that's part of the 10.7.
That's part of the 10.7.
Yes.
Okay. So, I do believe, although I'm in agreement with the cooler and the roof, I mean, we need to look at it as a whole, and what other projects are out there too, so, but I'm in support of that for right now. One thing I brought up too, and I sent it to you and Mark, was looking at a, some type of, how do I phrase it, I can't remember, about solar panels for our main buildings?
Yes, we're gonna work up a study, study on that and bring it back to the board.
And to finance it, but not pay it out cash, and let the, let your Duke Energy traditional payment pay for the financing, so...
Paul Smith is very excited, he's gonna be working on that project. He really is. He loves that stuff.
Or his assistant director.
He seriously loves that stuff.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, anyone, anybody else has any comments, questions on the CIP budget follow-ups? Mr. LaCouris, any other comments on that, if we move on to item number two? Any more? Okay, we'll go to item number two, which is CRA budget. Staff report.
Again, pretty much the CRA budget is there. This is to get input. There is, Ron, you wanna give what we're looking at, what monies are there, starting off with. We left a lot of open money there.
Yeah, I might have gone through this presentation before, but just explaining the CRA, the area that it is, it started in 2001, expires after 30 years, obviously the area of the CRA. The base share of 41,37,900 was the base taxable value. Any taxable values over the base year for city and county, go into the CRA, it's called tax increment financing. As you know, the property taxes went up 9.44% in the CRA, maintained the middle rate at 5.37. So for the city portion, it's 322,255 going into the CRA, and for the county portion, it's 321,849. And this is just putting it into the graphical perspective there, that's 50/50% between the city and the county. The expenses as budgeted, the biggest portion is the reserve, the reserve for capital of 260,000, 40%, the balance is personnel operating, the facade grants of 100,000, and the loan repayment of the 100,000 is expenditures. And then getting into the five-year projection expenditure-wise for the CRA, the same numbers I just mentioned, going across the first column there, 104,000 personnel, 78,000 operating, the 200 inch highlighted in the yellowish colors, the 260,742, which is available for expenditure, 100,000 for grants, and then the loan repayment to the sanitation fund of 100,000. Total expenditure is 644,000, and at the bottom highlighted, it's still leaving 249,488 in the CRA fund.
Pretty much in the CRA fund, some things to highlight that we need to talk about. Again, you know, I've been dealing for tonight for some of the major items and stuff. There are several main things in the CRA that we have to talk about as a board and plan and budget. One is the parking, and what we, what we are gonna do as a board in dedicating money towards, towards parking for the CRA. The second, the second thing is, you saw the proposal that I sent you that's gonna be coming, that has come in from the Historical Society about the jitney building and the display building. That's a major item that we need to look at and, and talk about in the CRA. And again, funding that, you know, dictates some of the other things you do in funding, but it was, it was something that is coming forward. In fact, Dudley Sally was one of the group that met with me about a week before he passed away, and was very excited to bring this project forward. So, it's about a hundred thousand dollar project, so that needs to be talked about. If, you know, we're dedicating that money to it, that's one of the major issues that we need to talk about. The one other thing we're gonna talk a little bit about tonight, that we haven't quite got the amount of funding for, that is reserved, is not budgeted, but is reserved in this year's budget, we haven't got to, is the railroad arm. And I want, I want Bob Robertson to talk about a little bit where we are with the railroad arm and where we're doing it. Those are three of the bigger things to talk about, and of course, there's lots of other things and ideas that we've got on list to talk about for this CRA, but I think with the time, those are three, those are three things that we should talk about and get a feel for, for the budget purposes.
Can you go over it one more time? Is parking, or the display for the jitney, the rail arm, and what was the other one?
Those are the three. Those are the three main ones.
I think I just said two, though. So there's a parking, the arm, then there's the jitney, and what was the third one?
Parking. You know, what we're gonna do about dedicating, you know, dedicating money in for future parking needs, parking, the parking situation that we've talked about. And I don't know, in this year, we're gonna have probably some roll, or we had 100,000 budgeted, because we were looking possibly some other areas. Ron, that's money that, how much do we have that'll roll over, and so the board can talk about if they wanna add to that money, or?
Yeah, we have 100,000 in the current CRA budget for parking. It hasn't been touched yet.
And that would roll over, and then additional, what this board would wanna dedicate, if they wanted to dedicate and reserve in the CRA for whatever we're gonna do in the future for parking. I think that's, again, these are major things that we can look at all the other things and do, but we need to decide on these big things to see what we're looking, you know, what we're actually looking at with the fund. So that's why I wanna talk about those three.
Okay.
With the boards, you know, that I think the board should talk about those three as debate items.
Thank you. Ms. Lemons, is she there? The three grants that we're offering to our CRA area has been very successful. How much do we have left from 2020, 21?
We've increased it to 100,000 for this current year.
Okay.
So I think there was about 40,000 that was left.
So we include a 60,000 this year?
Right.
That's going to be enough?
Yes.
For the three grants that you got?
We've been averaging about 65,000 a year over the past 10 years of the grants that we've been using each year. With the Building Code Grant, it just started in March, but we've got nine applications already.
Okay.
So I think that one is gonna be very popular. But the 100,000 is what we've got budgeted as a total for FY '22, and that's...
Our question is, 100,000 will be enough? This is something that we must continue?
Yes.
It's been very, very successful. You okay with that?
Yes, I'm fine with that, mhm.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. LaCouris, what improvement projects do you have scheduled for the CRA? I know that we did some walking around, and we look in some of the areas that need to be improved?
Yeah. Tom, you wanna talk about where with the ones this year that we're still working on? I think the down to the area of the trail, all the way down to the trail, those in the CRA would like to give an update where that status is?
Yeah, well, a couple of things we do. We wanna add some trees, and also want to add some additional lighting. The lighting's been an issue, because I ordered lights back in December, we still have not received them. So it's been eight, nine months. Yeah, we've been doing some upgrading, so we did finish some of the stuff on the trail from Safrid Avenue up to Lemon Street, add some flower pots and some things over there, and we'll continue moving that down the line. I know that Commissioner Carr asked that a while back. Some of the stuff that the power companies are doing along that area with the poles have actually hindered us in a couple of spots, but we'll be changing out flowers, of course, quarterly like we always do, and then I just ordered new garbage cans for downtown, too, so.
What about North Pinellas?
About North Palace? We're working on those, too. We have, you talk about the hanging pots along North Pinellas from Orange Street?
We need to beautify the place. I mean, I know that we restricted, you know, we don't have enough area to do things, but...
Give an update on which private properties you're working, still working on?
Yeah, we've done the beautification on the corner of Dodecanese and Alter 19 at the parking lot. We'll be putting another tree on one of those planters on the, on the west side of Alter 19, just up from Dodecanese. We worked with the doll house, we beautified that area. Of course, we're replacing the flower pots as we go along. We just don't have many properties that we've had an opportunity to do much along the way, unfortunately.
Anything that you need to do to the sidewalks, where the pavers are coming, coming apart? And a lot of people tripped.
Yeah, as we get those work orders, and we're getting them in, and we've worked with Duke again, they changed some poles along there. They've been a little bit slacking, getting back and making those repairs. I've been working with our representative from Duke to get those done, but as those come in, we usually get a work order, we're working, fixing those ourselves in-house.
The bed parts that I'm talking about are on the other side, on the east side of the road.
And as those work orders come in, and we get them on to them as fast as we can. Yeah, they're tough, those little thin pavers are...
All right, so we have enough funding for that?
Oh, yes, do all those in-house, yes.
We okay with all that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Carr, in the last workshop, he recommended that we earmark some funds for the, for parking, and I support that. Mr. LaCouris, you say we have 100,000 saved up for that already?
Yes.
Can we afford to do earmark another 100 in addition to that?
You can afford, there is the money there to do.
You got 644.
That's why I talked about, talking about the totality of the big projects, because you have, you know, you have the money availability on these bigger projects to do, and then what you do below those. So, so another 100,000, you could do, you could do that. Ron, availability...
If we can afford that, we can drop down to 50.
What would that leave them left? What would that leave them left? There's approximately...
In the CRA?
Yes.
Well, you've got the 260,000 available now, and if you took, it'll leave you 160,000 after the 100,000 for parking.
160,000?
Again, it depends on some of the other things you wanna do, how much you wanna put into parking.
Okay. Well, we can leave that one, and we'll talk about it later then, but I like to keep this idea alive, because I think we need to have parking in downtown. Let's talk about the glass building that was recommended by the Historical Society. Can you talk about that, Mr. LaCouris?
Yes. Basically, as you know, the jitneys, or you may not know, the jitney is stored right now in a garage that Tom Function has been begging for a year and a half to get the space back that we decided to store the jitney in. One of the biggest things with the jitney is, we've talked about, obviously, the ability to show it off. It's a, it's a great piece of history, it's very popular when you see it come out to the events, and we'd always, you know, we had talked about some different ways to do that. This idea that was brought forward not only gives a place where the, it's almost like a landmark to go, like a major piece of art, like destination place, when they go into the depot, or go in a museum, or go in downtown, this would be a glass-type garage structure that would display the jitney full-time, and have the full capabilities to serve as the garage and bring the jitney out and go to our events, like it did for our dedication of the plaque, you know, in the cultural center. So it would be a focus point, it would be, if you've seen the building, and we are getting some services on the design of the building that come along with that proposition, if you look at it, you kinda see what we talk about in the CRA, and destination points, and, you know, picture locations, and attractions of people coming to. And I think this, this would be, looking at it, not only you would get the use of it for people to get to see, but the availability of somewhere to store it and bring it out, and I think it just hits all of the checkmarks on what you'd wanna do for this historical vehicle.
Mr. Harry, does this project qualify from the American Rescue Fund?
The jitney program?
Yes.
You know, a lot of these things, we're still trying to figure out what is eligible and stuff offhand right now. I would say, no, I don't think so. But you know, with this whole thing, everything's pretty broad and vague with it, but...
Yeah. Thank you, that's all I have. Vice Mayor?
Sure. I just want, so with the jitney, I'll stay on that real quick. I think it's a great idea. I would like to see that we shave the 100,000 dollar cost back a little bit. To me, I don't know if there's even an opportunity to tap into some of the art funds as well. It is, I think, an art piece that's being preserved, and you're showcasing it within the city. It's a neat attraction point for people that are walking to downtowns and give them another area of something to... within the city, uh, it's a neat attraction point, uh, for people that are walking to downtowns and give them another area of something to see in our downtown area, so, uh, I do support it, I just, I'm not sure if I support the whole hundred thousand dollars for that, Mark. Um, I would like to understand the hundred thousand a little bit more, if, if that could be cut back a little bit, I do like the design, it's nice. With a nice looking roof and a glass building, um, you could also do like an old picture downtown with like the jit, the old school cars, like I'm looking at one right now with the diagonal parking of downtown Tarpon Avenue, um, where you could have something like that, that you show the old cars even in downtown on the backside where the doors are, uh, or their barn doors or whatever they are. Mark, is there, and Ron, can you correct me if I'm wrong, there's a plan update for thirty thousand, I thought I read in the budget book for the CRA, did I see that line item? Does that ring, ring a bell to you? Okay, thanks.
Which item is that?
It's, well, it, it's in the, it's in the line item book, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But it's for the, it's a plan update, I think it's like thirty thousand.
No, you're-
It's thirty-four thousand.
Karen, is that, are you talking about something you placed in there?
That was a carryover from the previous year and the FY twenty budget, we had proposed, um, seventy-five thousand dollars to do a master plan, an update of the CRA master plan, um, the board, um, cut that back to twenty-five thousand. We weren't able to do that for that, so it's just been carried over.
Okay, so from my standpoint, and if you could stay there, I've, I've got another question for you, Karen. Um, I, I would rather see brick and mortar than an additional plan updated, um, I don't know how we're, like, how an updated plan is gonna serve the CRA better, so maybe we could talk about that further in more detail, but, um, I'd rather see brick and mortar with a thirty something thousand dollars instead of a, a new plan put in place. Karen, so you mentioned that this year, there's like sixty something thousand dollars already used for the grants, which are great to be used, I think. So there's, let's say, thirty-five thousand dollars that will roll over and there's a hundred thousand dollars in next year's budget. So does that mean that it only, it'll be a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in next year for grants, or is it gonna just be the seventy thousand will make it whole, or sixty-five thousand will make it whole? You don't, you understand what I'm asking?
Yes, it's to make it whole to a hundred thousand.
Okay, so there's potentially, Ron, another thirty-five thousand dollars, if there's no more grants used in fiscal year twenty-one, that would be added to the remaining ending capital, right?
Right, you want it to be rolled over?
Yeah, so I mean, if it's, okay, I just want to make sure I understood that correctly. Parking garage, I think, is a must, it's something we've all been talking about for, since I've been on the board, I'm sure many people have talked about it well before I was on the board as well. Um, if we can't find the property or someone to sell, I think we need to start looking at the eminent domain route, uh, because it is an important thing, we're seeing a, a very vibrant downtown, we're seeing events come back more, parking's a big struggle. Uh, I do think it's important to keep allocating dollars for this because it's gonna be a significant cost, uh, but at the, at the end of the day, I think we really need to direct the city manager to come back to us and say, well, these are the two properties that will work and the property owners either are or aren't willing to sell and then we need to do what's best for our community in this situation, if, and if, and if that's eminent domain, then I think we need to start working on that process, um, but I think we're behind with the development that we're seeing in downtown um, and with the demand for parking at all times of the day, if it's at night or if it's during the day for the regular businesses, then it's something that, uh, I really think we should look at, um, and pursue further. Mark, you say, you say there's an update in the rail arm?
Yeah, Bob, you want to talk about where we are with the rail arm and?
Sure, the, um, so we, we now have a design build, um, RFP package ready that it conclude, it concludes design criteria for, based on a conceptual design for the railroad arm, based on guidance we've heard in previous meetings. Um, we are looking for some input from the board on some items related to the project, such as, um, are you comfortable with the design build approach? Is the board's direction still to keep it at the location as proposed at Stafford and Tarpon? And then lastly, um, the budget, what kind of budget is the board looking for to do this project?
Was there money- I think that's the main question, budget wise and stuff, for budget wise, what we were, we're looking at to, to lock that in.
Was there money set aside last budget or earmarked at all?
So I think the money was set in, kept in the reserve, um, for, in this fiscal year, um, I don't know that a certain amount was kept aside, just that it was held. Uh, Mark, maybe you can speak to that more, but.
Yeah, it, it was, it was held in there, it wasn't spent, um, till we get a better figure of what we were talking about, it, it's, it's there waiting to be dedicated. Tell them what you're thinking about, you know, again, under design, what we get, you know, anywhere sixty thousand we were talking about maybe in, in the area?
I, I was thinking more like ninety, but something in that range, sixty to ninety for sure, um, because again, we're talking about a design build approach, having a signed contractor that can come in with an engineer that can sign and seal the footer design and, and wind loads, um, to make sure we have something that isn't gonna fall over.
So I mean, my, if they're talking about a design build standpoint, regardless, I, I don't want to engineer designing anything anymore in the city of Tarpon Springs and nothing against your, your, your skillset, um, I think it's important to have a company that knows design and that does design. Uh, I would be somewhere between the forty-five and like fifty-five thousand dollar range. If you're talking about where the current location is, I do like the current location, but I also like the location at Ring and Tarpon Avenue as well as you come into the historic district, I think it's a nice piece, um, even, I mean, and to, I don't like comparing anything to Dunedin, but, uh, to reference Dunedin, they have two different types of arms, they have a rail arm that goes over the railroad track area, then they have a separate arm that goes over, or arch that goes over, um, where Alter nineteen basically stops and takes a right, right? So there's two different ones that they have, I, I don't know if we're ready for two of them, if we get one, I'm excited about it. Uh, but regardless, I, I do think, um, the ring, although it would have to be taller because it's trucking route, um, and Tarpon Avenue would be a good one to say, welcome to Tarpon, or Historic District of Tarpon Springs, and if we did it over the Stafford Avenue, um, it would be like something, instead of like, welcome to Historic Tarpon Springs, it would be the Historic Orange Trail Railroad or something along those lines. But at the end of the day, when you do design build, Bob, do they, would they be able to provide some ideas and then we could, we could grade the, the RFP based on the ideas that they provide, is that how that would work?
Yeah, well, mostly you're, you're scoring based on their experience and their ability to provide the services we're asking, but we can set it up, Gina may be able to comment on that, but we can set it up so that we score proposals. I, I don't necessarily want to ask a design build firm to come in with their exact design because they're doing that on their own, on an island, without input from us and without input from you and the public, so I'd rather select a firm that shows that they're capable of doing that work and then they can come and make those presentations and with public input, come up with a final design for board approval, that's my preference to do it.
Okay, I kind of see it the other way, I, I don't mean to be disagreeing with you on everything at night, but.
No, it's okay.
The, the, it'll see some design ideas, that would be really helpful, I think, and to have it, some part of their package, I think, would be beneficial as well, and it would help the board as well have more discussions because, I mean, to have some other, it would spur interest and spur some ideas, I think, being able to see some of those ideas.
And I apologize if I wasn't clear, it's something we can ask them to provide in their proposal, show the examples of things that they've done and maybe even a conceptual, you know, rendering on something that they can throw together, I just don't want to hold them to that design yet because it doesn't have all the public input, that's-
Okay, guaranteed it's gonna change, yeah, that's one thing I know for sure.
For sure, for sure.
Okay. Thanks, Bob.
Yes.
Um, a couple of things I just want to touch on, uh, real quick, is North Pinellas Avenue continuing to beautification. Um, the, at the end of the day, the crepe myrtles between Orange Street and Live Oak and Dodikinese, just, they look terrible. I don't want to say it would look better without anything there, but we really need to focus on what do we need to do to, to get more trees in that corridor um, and who we can focus on working with, I know that's something we've talked about for a few years. Stafford and Tarpon Ave improvements, uh, another area that's just a pedestrian bike trail, if there's an area to improve that area, if it's a right turn only instead of shooting across Tarpon Avenue on Stafford, I think that would be, go a long way. Uh, Mark, I think you guys were looking at some type of traffic study at one point in that area.
Yes.
Tom, can you come back up real quick, I've got a question about the lighting, is that lighting gonna go down Stafford at all or is that gonna be Tarpon Avenue? I can't remember, you said you had some additional lighting that you're gonna, you're waiting to order?
Yeah, we're gonna add, no, oh, yeah, two, two lights we're gonna go up on Stafford Avenue, up towards Lemon Street.
Two, what does that mean, I don't know, sorry.
Uh, Stafford Avenue going from the Tarpon Avenue towards Lemon Street, we're gonna add some additional lighting up in that section.
Okay, that's like just the light poles you're talking about, right?
Right, just decorative lights, yes, sir.
So similar to what you have in Mother Meers, what you guys did in Mother Meers parking lot, I thought it was great. And even with the string lights over Hibiscus in the, the back alley, I, I do believe that the string lights along the palm trees on Stafford Avenue and the bike trail, like from maybe Lemon up past, was it Brighter Days or what the heck is that brewery called?
Up Lemon Street, you started heading, uh, east?
So, I'm sorry, starting on Stafford and Lemon Street, heading north to Brighter Days Brewery, like to go after those trees to have, because that's really our downtown, like, core, right? And to have that lit up, because just more lights, because you have more people walking back and forth to different blocks and so on, so, um, I think that would go a long way from a beautification standpoint at night, uh, to have those string lights wrapped around either the palm trees and the crepe myrtles and the different trees that they have over there. Did you do that one, Mark?
Yes.
Okay. I brought this up in the past, uh, I believe the board last year thought it wasn't a good timing, um, but to actually evaluate the, um, the parking, it's parallel parking currently on Tarpon Avenue, uh, I do think some type of diagonal parking would serve better and would be safer to, to go a diagonal route, it would only be on one side of the road and you could change it once you get to Stafford and could go to the other side of the road. Um, but that's something I think we should talk further later on this year about. And then also the Hoffman lot, uh, that was purchased, um, there's discussions about moving the Stafford House there, I do believe that we should look at that, I don't think the Stafford House is being utilized very well where it's at today overall, and I do think the traffic pattern at Tarpon Avenue and Spring really should improve as well too, it's kind of a cluster in that area between Banana, Spring, Spring and Tarpon Avenue, um, so whatever we can do to improve, um, the traffic pattern there with just pedestrian safety and also car safety, uh, I don't know how many accidents are actually there, if there's that many, but I know I've seen a ton of close calls in that area. Um, so those would be a couple of other ideas that I would want to see in, within the CRA this year. Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan?
Thank you, I'll try and, uh, keep it brief in the interest of time and everybody else having an opportunity to speak. Ron, can you touch on the loan repayment to sanitation for a hundred grand?
Yes, that's a portion that when, when the property, the Hoffman property was bought, there was a three hundred thousand dollar loan from the sanitation fund. As you can see, it's being paid back in, over three years at a hundred thousand dollars per year.
This is the second year or last year?
Two thousand twenty, twenty-one will be the first year, twenty-two will be the first year, I'm sorry.
Okay, gotcha, so after this year, we've got three more years, or I'm sorry, two more years after this year?
Yeah.
Got it, okay. As far as the, let me start with the jitney, I think the jitney initiative and the glass building, uh, for me is one of the best initiatives that the CRA has taken for a major funding source since the, uh, since the facade grant program and some of the other grant programs. Um, I had an opportunity to check out what the mayor had visually as far as the conceptual renderings, I think it looks, uh, fantastic. Um, the jitney in itself was a great restoration project and is essentially a piece of Tarpon history. Um, and also, also is something that I think is being underutilized as far as being on display, um, so I, I definitely support that. Um, I know a hundred thousand dollars is, is a big bite, um, but I think, you know, you definitely get what you pay for. Um, so I, I definitely support that as far as, uh, funding and also the construction, um, and I see that in some of the backup, it goes beyond just the structure, it's also, uh, some rework of, of the sidewalks and a planter there, which I think looks nice, Mark, um, just to the west of it, so I thought, I, I support that. The rail arm for me is a little frustrating, um, this discussion started, you know, Rodney Chapman was here as a planner, that's how long it's been since we've been talking about this rail arm, so for me, my recollection is we voted on its placement, we voted on its look, I don't know why we would continue to revisit where it's gonna go or what it's gonna look like. So I support the rail arm where it is, where it was discussed. Ultimately, for me, I'd like to see it over Tarpon Avenue, but I don't want to continue to, to re-vote on something that's already been voted on again and again. So I would support the rail arm, um, the design build, Bob, I could go, you know, either way on how you want to go about that, for me, I just want to see it. The parking, as far as, uh, the lights, let me talk about the lights as it relates to the parking, I think the lights in the Meers parking lot looked great, Tom. You know, I'm glad that we switched the bulbs and went to a, the more yellow light than the white light, um, I'd like to see you do the same thing in the Court Street parking lot. I think, you know, that parking lot, especially during the nighttime, serves as a big part of the downtown core and I think if we, if we, we have beautiful oak trees in that parking lot to string the lights from, so I think that would, that's an easy, you know, no brainer beautification thing, um, do we have, uh, a power source there that we would be able to utilize?
Yeah, actually, last year, we put some other lighting in there, it's up lighting, uh, so the power's already there, so we can tie into that.
So no problem to string some lights in the trees?
No, sir.
If the board is good with that, I think that's a really easy thing to do. Again, the jitney, I think, you know, to use some of Mark's words, I think it would act as a, as a destination for people to come and see, it's definitely a form of art. I don't know that I would go so far as to take some money from the Public Art Fund, although I like where the vice mayor's coming from with that. But it would definitely be, you know, an area in town where people would, uh, go to as a destination. Of the two hundred and sixty thousand dollars that's available, I'm good with putting some money into, uh, putting another, another fifty or a hundred thousand dollars towards parking downtown, um, but I think that.
I'm sorry, you said fifty?
Fifty or a hundred, I'm open to both, Mayor.
Sorry, no problem.
No, that's all right, I think that, you know, as we continue to look for this long-term solution as it relates to a parking garage, I don't think we should pass up some of the short-term fixes, right, like, I'm always someone who's gonna be a proponent of owning versus renting, however, you know, when you're government and you're limited in terms of what you can do or how you can do it, if an opportunity comes up to capture another parking area through the form of a lease, like the vice mayor did behind, uh, Bank on Fitness or Court Street, for me, that's something that I'm interested in, so I'd like to be able to continue to fund, you know, some money for a parking garage, but if an opportunity comes available and the city manager can identify or work with one of the property owners, for me, the banks are a no-brainer, right? Like SunTrust Bank, we should be talking to them, Wachovia or, uh, Wells Fargo, we should be talking to them, so I mean, if an opportunity comes up for, you know, a little bit of money annually, obviously, we don't own it, but if an opportunity comes up and we can, we can capture and control a piece via a lease, I think that that's something we should do and I think that we should have the funds that we're budgeting also be available for lease fees for parking. Ultimately, we're trying to accomplish the same thing. So that's basically what I have for the CRA, I could go on and on about the grant programs and how beneficial they are, I'm, I'm glad to see that we're gonna continue to fund that, I mean, if you, if you look at the CRA in, in terms of how the CRA fund is funded, dollar for dollar, the, the grant programs are as good as it gets. You know, you're literally giving people money to improve their properties, which therefore in return, better funds are fun, you know, through increased value, so I mean, there, there could be a, a better source, um, so other than that, I yield my time to the rest of the board, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I'll be, uh, brief as well, try to touch on everybody's comments, um, as far as the Hoffman property goes, uh, I think regardless of where we're heading on that, we need to start moving, we need to get some ideas on paper, we need to get some numbers together. You know, based on this year's budget, it's probably not gonna be this current board's, uh, decision, but I'd definitely like to at least start the process of saying, okay, what are we gonna do there and how much is it gonna cost, because I've heard a lot of different things from, from residents and, you know, until you have a dollar value assigned to something, you really are just kind of shrugging your shoulders, um, so that's something I'd like to start moving on. Uh, as far as leasing potential parking, uh, parking venues, I, I absolutely agree with, uh, really on all except for SunTrust. Just because, you know, SunTrust closes at four, uh, they're actually my bank, so I, I always get frustrated that they close at four. But that parking lot is full nightly, um, long past when they're open and it's just kind of one of those things right now where there's no issue with it, SunTrust has never made an issue of it, so I think by approaching them and asking them, hey, can we lease this? You know, that may on paper be an idea where, okay, hey, we should be leasing this, we should have control over it, but in practice, everybody parks there right now anyway for no consequence, so that's just maybe a hornet's nest, I don't want to kick up. Uh, but as far as the other, um, properties go, I absolutely agree to, to approach for leasing when, when possible. Uh, parking in general, I, I wouldn't be in favor of using any- Parking in general, I wouldn't be in favor of using any eminent domain, but investing in future parking in downtown is definitely important. I'd be happy to see that 100 grand that we currently have allotted be added to, whether that's 50 or another 100 or whatever value we come up with. As far as the jitney, the jitney goes, I also really support that in concept. I think the preliminary designs looked really neat for that one. The only things that I think we're really going to have to consider is the building maintenance and cleanliness. I mean, that's going to, you know, have to be cleaned daily if people are going to be walking by there, taking pictures and stuff through the glass. Sinage, I didn't see any signage on the concept. That's probably just because it's a concept, but that's just another thing to consider into that cost is you probably want some sort of sign either on the roof or side of it just saying, hey, here's what this is, please come interact with it. And then also just interaction in general with it. Is that garage, and this is for the board or anybody that can tell me, is the garage meant to be entered or are people just going to walk up to it and look at it?
No, it's not meant to be entered.
Okay.
Except when the person goes to take the jitney out is the garage person.
Okay. And I'm okay with that as long as we make it more accessible for pictures and interaction. Different platforms maybe that lead up to the glass and then not have that white bar in the middle of the glass in certain spots so that they can take pictures standing outside of it, something like that. And then as far as beautification goes, pressure washing is something I don't think we can do enough of, whether we've got to buy another one or rent another one or pay some overtime for somebody to get out there and pressure wash more. I just don't think we can do it enough as far as the CRA goes and really everywhere. And then somebody else mentioned tree lighting. I think everywhere that we're able to do that, it's been a success so far and that's something I'd like to see as well. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
I'd feel better about tree lighting if we had some trees to put them on. I'm still, would like to see something pursued on North Pinellas. We've been working on that for four years. One of the worst spots that you can have is coming up to a stop sign at Athens Street, for example, looking to the left and seeing all the broken concrete right there. It just doesn't serve Tarpin Springs very well in that regard. And then the same thing with the downtown beautification plan that we started last year, both oak trees and acorn lights down Tarpin Avenue as well as Stafford that we talked about, the two down there. So we've got a tree fund that's continuing to grow. I looked at that. We do take money out of there for things that are not trees. We probably should talk about that at some point. But we have the money to plant trees, so I'd like to see some trees planted, not just continue to talk about it. And then we can talk about putting lights around them, too. The jitney building, I'm for that. One thing that hasn't been mentioned is Mr. Hoffman's going to dedicate his architectural services for that, which is a good pot of money for that. I can't tell you how much he would normally charge, but that's something the city would not have to pay for. So he's willing to do that. I spoke to the city manager. There was a request from a historical society for four hours more for their port, four hours per week more for their part-time help. It's not, they're not a city employee. We basically give them a check for that expense. So it would just be upping the four hours a week for that. City manager didn't seem to think that there was a problem with that. The Hoffman-Sum Bay property, I'd like to have first dibs on a town hall meeting for talking about that. I mean, we've been tied up with a budget and everything. And I'd like to do that in the fall, once this budget's done, so we can get a sense from the residents. I think they're going to agree with moving the, my sense says, from what I hear around town, is that they would agree with moving the Stafford House, that location. And I think we need to move ahead with that and do that. Or if we don't want to do that, then I really think we need to do something to that property and just not let it sit there like that. You know, one person referred to it as a sandbox. We've done a nicer job of keeping it clean, there's no doubt about that. But it is at the focal point of our community. So those are the four items I wanted to mention. The rest of the stuff, we can catch up at some other point. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Herring. I do support you to build the glass building for the jitney. I think it's part of our history. The jitney has transported so many residents years ago and it was restored to its original stage with the public money. I think we need to support that and seems like we have a full support from the board to build that. Question that I have, Mr. Herring, is that is that considered to be as a public art? Or anyone can tell me that? I'm trying to get some funding to include it.
I'd be asking the wrong person.
I'm not thinking... I don't want to put him on the spot. I don't think, I don't think it is.
You don't think it is?
But that's maybe me, but I don't want them to put themselves out. I don't think it could be considered that by a stretch.
And would not consider as art?
I don't think so.
Who you picturing, Mark?
I'm just by the ordinance, I'm not thinking so. I'll look, we'll look a little more. I'll see if I can have a better...
Isn't architectural and landscape...
I just want to make sure that we're having enough funding for it, you know?
But Mayor, we're trying to get that money budgeted for this year, this year coming.
Yes.
Do we, I mean, shouldn't we agree tonight whether we want to actually do that 100,000, regardless of whether where the money comes from?
Well, what do you mean where it comes from? It's got to come from someplace.
No, I understand, but I mean, I'll be honest with you. I think Mr. LaCource is being very polite as far as it being public art. I can tell you, it's not public art. And I'm not going to approach Ms. Jennings and ask her if she thinks the building for the jitney is public art. I can tell you what she's going to tell me. It won't be a polite no either. So, I mean, if that helps.
Okay. Well, and I do support that.
We will look, Mayor, if there's anything else to do. But I think we can fund it within the CRA. But if there's any other place that we think we can get some money, Ron and I will go and look.
Okay. For parking in downtown, allocating money for it, I heard 100,000, I heard 50,000. It wasn't clear, we didn't give a clear direction to Mr. LaCource. Mr. LaCource, how many 50s you got and how many 100s?
I don't know, I think we need to go down the line again.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
Well, let's make sure what we got.
It's in relation to this?
Okay, go ahead.
So my question would be whether or not, before we allocate funds, the temperature of the board in terms of utilizing some of that money for parking leases as well?
Free with Commissioner Terrapini on that.
With having some for leases as well?
My point being is that if we're open to leases, then I'm willing to allocate more. You know what I mean? Like if we can utilize some of this pot of money for downtown parking or CRA parking and utilize some of it to pay for annual lease fees, then I find it, you know, more advantageous to allocate more funds.
Well, my understanding was that we were trying to buy our own parking for the downtown.
Yeah, I agree with that.
You know? If we use it to lease other parking, that's, we're going to utilize it for something else. We're never going to buy anything. You know what I mean?
It's not a lot of money, though. Like, for example, our annual lease fee on Court Street, the thing is like $12,000, which to me goes a long way in parking, but it's not like a giant dollar figure, you know?
I mean, we pay that anyway, so I don't think we should tie that to that, you know? Let's just concentrate on this particular one. To buy property for parking that we'll be trying to get for, it doesn't have to be a parking garage, just any parking for downtown. Yeah, that's what we would be trying for years. And I think it's time to start allocating money for it.
Mayor, there's also the opportunity, I mean, funds available in the CRA that if the city manager finds an opportunity to do a parking lot or a parking garage lease, that there's additional funds there, right? That could be done.
Do that anyway.
So we're not utilizing all the money in the CRA. So at the end of the day, we could still do that if the city manager finds a willing partner. If I'm wrong, Mark, let me know.
And just to note, the 100,000 we're rolling over, that was for anything, parking lot leases. The 100,000 that we would roll over has those multiple uses on it. If you want to change that...
See, you can do it already, then.
If you want to change that of the new money you're dedicating, that would be your choice, how you structure that money. Right now, the 100,000 is future parking of any type, lease buying to go towards a place where we may put a future garage. There's no restrictions to one building and stuff.
Got it.
So it's like, the 100,000 that we're rolling over right now is like you say, Commissioner Terrapini. Now, if you want to take money, if you want to add money to it that's strictly for future build, then you just have to designate that if you want to do that right now.
Well, okay. I mean, as long as we save some money for that, I guess I go low with that.
Okay.
Are we going 50 or 100?
Start down the line?
Commissioner LaCource?
The way you're describing, yes.
Yeah, but 50 or 100, though?
100?
Which one?
50 or 100?
100.
100, okay.
I'm good with 100.
I'll go 100.
100.
I don't love just picking two numbers, that sounds, but I'm good with 100.
Okay. Mr. LaCource, 100 is the unanimous...
I heard $100, right?
I'm not going to talk anything about the Hoffman's building because we are supposed to have a town hall meeting and get the citizens' involvement on that anyway. So that's something we're going to be talking about later.
About the jitney?
The jitney, yes. I'm going to support that. I think it is very, very important to our, to our history. I think we're going to get that. I'm supporting that as well.
Should we have consensus on the jitney, then?
Yes. Commissioner LaCource, you said okay already, right?
No.
You didn't?
I didn't hear you, Mayor.
Okay. The jitney, you supporting that?
Good. Am I supporting it? The answer is yes.
Yes.
I'm good with what's budgeted.
You're good?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. You got 100% with that as well?
Yeah.
Got it? I think, Mr. LaCource, I think now you got a clear direction, is that right?
So far, yes.
Thank you. Now, we have 25 minutes left. I was thinking, with the permission of the board, to go to item before, which is the general fund follow-up, the new positions, and then we'll come back to enterprise fund, if you're okay with that?
We also have Mr. Trask's contract as well.
There's several, the reason I put general funds follow-up, including new positions, there's also another general fund. Here are the things that I want to bring back up in that area. The first one is that Mr. Herring has found money to finance all six of those positions. So the six positions are funded and set to go as we speak. So that was one issue to bring back to you and let you know. One of the issues that we didn't discuss, that we didn't discuss when we were talking about positions and salaries and stuff, to introduce, and again, it's an introduction, this will come back to you, but is about the city attorney and his proposal for a contract. The third thing in general fund I wanted to note is I gave you some rough estimates on something that we know we're going to see in the public hearing part of it, because she's talked about it at this board and several of you have mentioned about it, is the museum, the museum on the Oakwood property. And I will tell you, you've got, Kevin's here tonight. Kevin will admit that he estimated maybe a little high on the 354, but the reason he did is because of the crazy things that's going on in building construction with prices under normal times. I think he'll tell you to clarify, it's maybe 250 to 300 he would have proposed. But, and that's something that we, I'm just bringing up now as you set funding and stuff. We know that this item has come up at meetings beforehand. I had promised Mrs. Dabs that we would try to work up a general schematics of a building and the cost so it would be considered during budget time. That's there to you. Again, the cost would hopefully be lower, but right now in this building time. So those were the three new things in general fund, however you want to spend time of talking about. I think probably the city attorney salary, the city attorney contract and stuff to get the introduction. Again, it's an item that's going to come back, but it will add a little bit of funding that will be needed for budget purposes. But it's up to the board where are those items to go forward. But that's why I put that item on there.
Mr. LaCource, let's talk about the sixth position that you say you got funding. Is anything that you want to talk about that?
Nope, we found the money to fund those, so they're funded and ready to go in the budget.
Okay. I know Mr. McCloy is over here, that's one of his wishes, so thank you, Mr. McCloy. I thank the whole committee for your work.
And we will be going before the Budget Advisory Board, the 19th, I think, or whatever. We will be, those other items that we'll be dealing with from the salary survey, any re-grades, any re-grades of positions, those type of things, you asked for it. Remember, I said before that those items, the final items that we do every year at the last meeting in August that deal with personnel, the salaries, again, any grade changes, wage changes and stuff, that will be coming to you the second meeting of August because it has to be in resolution form before it's put in the budget. You have to have a resolution on those. So that will come up the second meeting of August. And the Thursday before that meeting, we will be meeting on those items with the Budget Advisory, as this board stated for us to do.
Okay. Mr. LaCource, on the museum, you say that can be anywhere from 350,000 to 475?
Kevin, you want to come up and talk real fast about the estimate and where you get and what it might be, might not be?
It's expensive, yeah.
It's expensive.
Yeah, so with the cost of construction now, things are going up. But there's also variables in there as far as, you know, are we going to do a complete parking lot? Or we're just going to do the one accessible spot? We're going to have grass parking? We're going to have landscaping? So there's just a lot of variables that are going into it. Under normal times, I think it'd probably be about a $250,000 project to build a building. But then again, you know, what are those extras that we're going to put into the building or into the property itself? So not knowing what we're looking at, I just kind of gave a wide price range to kind of cover for if we're going to do a parking lot, if we're going to do additional landscaping, are we going to do a memorial on the property, you know, those type of things.
Kevin, is it because we don't have materials available now and this is why the price is so inflated?
Lumber went up about, being told about 300%. I think it's come down a little bit since then, but it's still kind of hard to say. It's really in the logistics side of it, shipping material. There's material, but it's just not getting shipped to where it needs to be. So some of the prices have come down, but they haven't really come down considerably much.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
I kind of know that area and I don't know that you've done this, but does your scope of work include a geotechnical survey of that site?
It would, I think you would need that, definitely.
There was some differential settling with that building and we just want to make sure that whatever we do...
Sure. Yeah, so those are the variables that are thrown in there.
That's a cost item.
So, you know, looking at is what does it cost to build a building?
Right.
But then we go into everything else, that's what goes into the construction of it. Geotech is one, you know, parking lots another. Just, there's different variables on that property.
It'll be a peer foundation as well, again.
Yeah, it's going to go back basically what it was, look-wise.
It's a reconstruction.
Right. It's just to reconstruct the basic look of what was there and then look at using material inside as kind of display walls or something like that.
Is that a wooden building or is that...
It'll be a wood building. It's going to be made to look like the original building. Now, the siding on that, yeah, so that's going to be, you know, additional cost there. It's not just standard lap siding.
That's the atomic roof type thing?
The siding itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not just standard hardy lap siding. It's going to be a wood product that is going to get milled.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. LaCource, is this something that we can schedule this year or is this something that we can...
Again, that's why I'm bringing it forward to you. Obviously, again, this is an item that we know is going to come up in public comments in September, but that's a little late in the budget of dedicated money. We know, you know, Ms. Dabs has come to this board with this concept previously. So it's your decision where the money, we're trying to lay out all these projects and what we're budgeting for, you know? Is it, first of all, is it a project that... Is it, first of all, is it a project that you want to take on? If it is, it is for this budget, a future budget, that's all decisions of the board and what else you're doing with. But you, you haven't even vetted whether, whether you agree with the concept or not. Just bringing it forward because it's going to come up in September in the public hearings when it's come up. There's a very short timeframe to do it with a budget, so I was just calling to your attention as you're setting monies and, and items for the, for the budget, you know, if that is an item you want to consider putting in. And that's purely a, a board choice. All we committed to Ms. Dabs and, and to bring to you from her previous, coming to the board is an idea of what a construction of a building that basically looked like it, it would before, what that building was cost. A basic outline, if you look at the outline, she, the main thing is, is a museum display area, but a little bit of storage, a little office, and of course, we have the, the ADA restrooms that have to be there. So again, it's a decision of the board where they place it in the budget priorities. Is it now, later? Or is it something that the board even wants to do? And that's purely a board decision.
Yeah. Mr. Licoris, I, I think, in my opinion, I think it's something that we should do. I just want to make sure that we have funding for it.
That's up to this board.
Well, do you have the numbers that I can show that we can afford it? That's what.
Again, it's up to what the board puts in the, we're not finished with the budget process yet. What else do you put in the board and is this priority of it? You have to decide the priority of it getting in there. So that, that's, that's what direction you have to give us.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I've got a quick comment on this. In my opinion, it doesn't change. I think we should sell this to Habitat for Humanity, put up a memorial monument, a historic marker that talks about the church, talks about, the name is escaping me right now, but the gentleman who owned it before, who lost it to code enforcement. Honor him and his history with the, the music side of things. But get it back to where someone can build on that piece of property and get a good house through Habitat, through Humanity. I don't see a new need for a, a museum currently. I don't see a new need for a community center currently. We have four museums that I believe are underutilized that could be utilized for whatever museum is being looked to be put in this piece of property. If you're looking for a community center, I think the community center two blocks away is a good fit as well. But at, at the end of the day, I think this should be another residential piece of property and it's be sold to Habitat for Humanity at a discounted rate and get another home on it. So I'm not in support of this moving forward.
Commissioner Terrapini.
In a nutshell, I basically agree with the vice mayor. I mean, I don't think that we need to spend three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to create a new museum in a residential area. I definitely support memorializing, memorializing something for this project, for this property. We talked about you doing that before and saving some materials for, you know, some form of a placard, a historical marker, or anything like that I would support. But I'm not in support of creating a new museum on this piece of property in the sum of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I don't think it, I don't think the options are as simple as the memo may, and, and it's intentionally brief, I think, for our discussion. But I think the memo makes it kind of sound like you either spend three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars on building this museum, or you don't, and that's it, and you don't care about the history there. I, I don't think it's that simple. I'd be happy to see the alternatives for a memorial, a public art project, a plaque site, any, any of those sort of things. What would the funding source be for this, Mark? Would it be CIP or where would this come from?
Yes.
Okay. And how much CIP money did we have? One-point-five million, you said?
What was that question again?
You said, you said we had one-point-five million when we started this budget process, right?
Yes.
And as of tonight, we currently have one-point-four-eight of it committed?
Approximately, yes.
Correct, right? Okay. Yeah, this, this is something, as far as funding goes, I'd be happy to look into a memorial or a public art project or anything we can do there to pay homage to the history. But as far as a three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar brand-new museum in the area, I mean, just in terms of the dollars and cents, it's not in the budget. If you wanted to contribute something small, budget by budget for the future, that's something I'd be open to look into as well. But according to our current budget, we only have twenty-thousand dollars left in CIP.
So you were now looking for placing some kind of a memorial there?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Licoris?
I, um, I'm ninety-nine percent sure and City Manager Licoris can confirm this. We voted to demolish the Bible Church of God, isn't that correct?
Yes.
And we also made certain representations that what we would put back in that location as a commission. And we also saved lumber from the old building to put into the new building when we rebuild the new building. And that lumber is stored, if I'm not mistaken, in the police, the old police station back here, is that correct? Over here at the ban shell or someplace back here, yeah. So we've got that stored as well. And, and I recognize money is an issue right now. Probably the, the building climate is not the smartest as far as the cost of construction. But I, I, I think we need to kind of just be a little careful with, with what we're talking or what we're saying now. And I'm just saying, that's my recollection that we've made certain representations. And I would support moving ahead with some conceptual design if we're tight this year on what this new building would look like in the future in order to, to kind of stage it for something that we would do in the future. And, and I'm not ready to say we're turning that property over to Habitat, Humanity, or anything like that. I think it's going to, that would be a huge disappointment to the, to the community, Union Academy, Neighborhood. And so I, I think we, we need to just move ahead in some way or another with this, I don't want to call it a promise, but certain representations we made with what we're going to do if we took that building down. Whether it's a thirty or forty thousand dollar funding wedge for looking at a conceptual design or some renderings to see what we really want to do and, and develop some ideas about it. But along the lines of what the Union Academy Neighborhood had wanted to do and, and as, as, you know, the whole community wasn't here, but there are certainly representatives here of that, so.
Commissioner Terrapini, it's under.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to point out that the, the lot is about a five-thousand-square-foot lot. So in terms of, you know, meeting our own codes in terms of parking and handicap accessibility and things of that nature, if you were to entertain building something there, I think the site is prohibitive. So what I would, and I, and I also don't, not to contradict what Commissioner Vaticiatus has said, but I don't remember making any representations that we would build something there. I remember saying that we would utilize some of the material to memorialize something one way or the other. So my, my, just one more point would be that if we were to take it one step further and try and really, you know, create more of a memorial, it would be, I think it would be more advantageous to do so at another existing site within the Union Academy Neighborhood, possibly Dorset Park. That's, that's all I had to add.
Thank you. Well, I am under the impression that I thought we're going to replace the building with something else. That's the way I understood it too. But look, in the, the outcome of this, seems like we have three no's and two yeses, so. Yes.
Well, Mayor, if I could, I just, I, I think sometimes when we talk about projects, we had so many good capital project ideas come up this year, and we see kind of what the shopping list boiled down to. So again, if you want to invest in, in some future museum on the site, I'm, I'm happy to. But I would just recommend looking at the CIP budget on that penny fund or looking at the CIP in general and saying, what do we want to replace that we just talked about?
Vice Mayor.
So I, I just want to reiterate as well, there was no commitment to the community that we were going to rebuild anything. I remember the meeting quite well because, and the city manager covered it tonight when he made the proposal to us, is that the commitment was that we're going to review it as what the cost would be to rebuild it. And we'd hold some of the items to do some type of sign of some sort to, to honor the, the building that was there. But the commitment wasn't from the commission. It could have been from an individual commissioner to the community, but it wasn't from the commission as a whole. The commitment was that we would look at it from a pricing standpoint and a budget standpoint, and that's, I believe that's what we're doing right now. So with that, I think we've fulfilled our commitment. It's a significant spend, and I don't think there's necessarily another need for a museum or community center based on our current demographics of our buildings and where we're at today. So at the end of the day, it's, it, would it be nice to have another building? One-hundred percent. If you had an endless checkbook, we could put a museum on every, every neighborhood that we have. But we have plenty in museums that are available right now to be used with open spaces.
Well, it's eight-twenty-five, we've got five minutes left. Mr. Licoris, I think you got it.
City Attorney's contract.
Huh?
City Attorney's contract?
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Licoris, you want to talk about that?
I'll, I'll go ahead and let Tom talk about it.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it should probably, you know, the contract with our law firm is about to expire. It'll expire in October. And a couple of months ago, I approached the city manager with the idea of talking about this during the budget process so that you weren't talking about it in September, October, when the budget process had been completed. Because I frankly thought it would be a better idea now, and that's the reason I reached out in April for, for this discussion. So I provided Mark, he asked me to provide some, some input. I provided him with a proposal. In that proposal, what I'm suggesting is, is increasing the retainer to seventy-five-hundred dollars a month for the first forty-five hours of billable time. And I'm also asking that we change the hourly rate for the litigation, code enforcement matters that we, we currently charge for separate and apart from the retainer. In addition, I thought it would also be important for you to take a look at the retainer billing history. So I provided you with that. I provided one to Mark back in April. But the one I handed out tonight, I, you know, updated through the end of July. And I just want to explain what it is so that you understand when you're looking at it. So each, each month on this sheet that I handed, there's three pages, you'll see a couple of different things. The, the bill, the billing date, the individuals that were involved in that particular month. And the initials under timekeeper are the lawyers or the paralegals that had provided work on that particular month. So if we use the, the first one, for example, on May first, 2020, there were ninety-six-point-one hours of attorney and paralegal time produced for that month. That totaled or generated a fee of sixteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-nine dollars, of which I charged the, the city six-thousand dollars. So our firm basically ate ten-thousand-one-hundred-and-nine dollars. And each month thereafter, you can see the significant loss for our law firm each month because of the extra needed time that we provided to the city, the work that we did. And you can see as you go through month, month, month after month that we're not being compensated for the work that has been completed for the city. And that's mainly because of the fact of the agreement that we had agreed to, we had contracted to, and we stuck to it. We didn't come back to you over, after the first year, the second year, the third year, asking for an increase. I, I basically went through those three years, basically eating that cost every single month for the firm. So what I'm suggesting is, is to try to make it a little bit more, put us in a position of compensating us for the actual work that's being completed with the understanding that it's just not me that you're looking at when, when you're looking at these retainer billings. There are five board-certified attorneys in local government. I think we're the only law firm anywhere in the area that, that could, could boast that. But you have Erica Jello, she's covering the Board of Adjustment, the Planning Board, Heritage Preservation Board. You've got Rob Eschenfelder also.
Mr. Trask?
Yes.
Let me interrupt you for a minute.
Yeah, we have one minute left.
If I can extend the time for another ten minutes?
I will make that motion to extend for ten minutes.
Second.
Rock Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Trask, continue please.
Thank you, Mayor. So Rob Eschenfelder doing procurement and labor law for the city. Jay Daniel, Randy Mora, Nancy Meyer handling litigation and appeals for the city. So there are eight lawyers currently at our firm that are working for the city. Even though you just see me at the commission meetings, there are all these other lawyers that are working behind the scenes handling matters for the city. So the proposal that, that I provided for you tonight then is, is to increase the retainer to seventy-five-hundred dollars a month for the first forty-five hours of billable time. Anytime after that would be at the hourly rate of a hundred-and-eighty-five dollars an hour. I'm also asking that the litigation hourly rate be changed progressively over the next three years, entering into a three-year agreement at one-eighty-five, one-ninety-five, and two-oh-five over the next three years. So that's the proposal that I provided to Mark, and then I'm asking for, you know, your consideration in that. Keeping in mind that we have been the city attorneys for the past twenty-five years for Tarpon Springs, and we wish to continue on in that role. And also, obviously, you know, we, we have the experience, probably over a hundred years of experience between all the lawyers that are at the firm handling local government matters. And we currently represent, I believe, ten municipalities in Pinellas County. So we get not only the experience, but also the, the work product, saving time and so forth, and having the ability to, to work city to city. So that, that's my, my request on behalf of the law firm.
Okay. Mr. Trask, this is something that you're going to, is going to be on the agenda to be discussed?
However you want to proceed, Mayor. The contract obviously needs to come back to you at a regular commission meeting for approval.
Okay.
Yes.
Couple of things that I want to talk about is, in August, we're supposed to complete the evaluation for the charter staff, and it's supposed to be done this month. I'd rather we wait, complete that first. And also, I would like to, to see if, you know, to have a fair understanding what's comparable to the other city attorneys of the areas, you know, to make sure that we, we're doing the, we have the right decision. That's my take on that. Vice Mayor Carr?
Definitely have a problem looking into this further and coming back before the board for renewal. I just need to evaluate a little bit more where we're at. I do think our services are good overall. We can get timely and promptly responses from our city attorney. I enjoy working with them. So however I can, I, I would like to continue services, but I just need to, I mean, what's the discussion tonight? Is the discussion to, do we find budgetary numbers?
It's just to introduce it, yes.
I mean, it's eighty-two thousand or ninety-seven, ninety-seven thousand dollars that was written off over the past year. So is that like what we're looking at for additional budgeted?
I don't know. Ron, have you done the actual budget analysis of it yet or about how much you would add to the budget?
For the city attorney department?
Yes.
Yeah, well, the budget-wise, we got a total of a hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand in the budget currently.
So did we?
And the difference?
What would be the difference? Have, have you had a chance to analyze it yet of the difference of this contract approximately?
Based on this contract with the retainer, it would be going from the seventy-two thousand a year total to, to the ninety thousand. So it's gone up eighteen thousand. That's, that's for the retainer.
And then if there's litigation, it's additional on top of that?
Yeah, we checked the hours and over the last couple of years, it looked like about, based on going at, up that ten bucks an hour, it'd be about another seven thousand dollars. So you have the eighteen thousand plus the seven thousand, so about twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm not sure if that's, agrees with Tom's numbers there, but that's per our records from the billing.
Okay. And this is just the introduction saying, city attorney wants to be paid for what he's, what he does, right? I've got no further comments.
Happy to consider it.
Yeah, I mean, this is a nice ten-minute introduction. I'd have to look into it more on the actual numbers. But very satisfied with Mr. Trask, and I appreciate all him and his law firm does for us.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. What, what are we doing? Putting a funding wedge of twenty-five thousand in the budget for the new contract? Is that how we're handling it or?
Well, actually, the only thing we're doing right now is just introducing the, the idea that he's going to raise the, he's going to present us with a new agreement with an increase.
And get more, but, and, and get more information later, as you described, is that correct?
Yeah, I want to make sure we get some information.
Yes, including the budgetary, pretty much estimated the budgetary impact for that.
Yeah.
Mayor, can I just address one other thing?
Yes.
If you don't mind. So I want you to understand that when you look at that city attorney budget, if you look at the actual in 2019 and the actual in 2020, it is significantly different than what is being proposed in the budget for next year by under $70,000. And in addition, I would like you to note that there is about $15,000 in the city attorney budget that has nothing to do with our law firm. For some reason or another, the, all the attorney's fees that are associated with the labor lawyer that has been representing the city are lumped into the city attorney budget. So all of those fees, when you see from Johnson Jackson Law Firm every month when you get your agenda, those are also falling into the city attorney's budget item, but it's not part of what I charge the city. So when you look at that number, I'd like you to understand that that's, when it says city attorney personnel, that's city attorney, labor attorney. It's not us. In addition to that, there's a provision for court reporter fees. It's a small dollar amount, but again, that's not something that we're paid. That is something that's paid to the clerk of the court or to the court reporter for like when you do your shade meetings, your executive sessions. So that's falling into the budget as well, but it's not being paid to our law firm. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I just, so what we're going to do is, the second week, the second commission meeting of August is when we're going to have this additional information. That's when we decide on Mr. Trask's contract. Is that right? And that's when we put the funding wedge in there? Is that correct?
That's where we're doing the cities. You could also consider it then, but you still have more time with his contract because it'd be a different item. Our, the resolutions on the salary, his contract would be a different item.
All in one together.
But you could talk about it then, talk about it further. You've got till, we need to get it done because I think it expires in mid-October. So it is different, but the same.
That's good. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, we, the time is 8:37 PM. We've got three minutes left. We still have the item number three, which is the enterprise funds. Anything that you wanted, anybody wants to discuss real quick for three minutes?
Don't tempt us with fun times, Mayor.
Well, not. The meeting is adjourned. 8:37 PM. Thank you, everybody.